I'll do it fast. I'll talk fast.
We don't need to talk fast.
Oh, last week. Send it again.
I can, I can find it. I just go back and look at it.
I think I sent it out.
Oh, well, or did you send it to me and I sent it out?
Yeah, we're, we're on. We're good.
Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of facilities and transfer station manager job.
My apologies, Commissioner Mopkin wanted to provide a brief update of the strategic committee.
I'm getting tired. Go ahead.
Really quick. So we have been meeting now and COVID kind of interrupted our plan. However, we are making progress. We have three objectives on our strategic objective of plan. Develop a resiliency plan and our goals under that is develop an asset management plan, create a sustainability or continuity plan and update all of our hazard plans for the county. Our second objective is to develop a communication plan. Our goals under that, create an external public relations plan, develop a robust leadership plan, create a central repository for policies, procedures and documents and create an internal communications plan. And then our third is update our technology plan and our goals are to develop flexible delivery of services, build policies and procedures around technology capabilities, train employees on use of the technology and improve the IT infrastructure plan. I want to thank Pat tremendously. She's really taken the lead on this and we have a team within the county. We've had a few drop off because lack of timing and the COVID issue. But still, we've got a vibrant team in place to help us put all of these plans in place. I hope that, I just want to keep you guys up to date on what we're working on as we go. So that, you know, at the end of the day, you kind of understand what we're doing and, and giving us any feedback. So.
Do you have the IT five-year plan now? Do you have that?
David has drafted a brand new plan. I don't know.
We came out a couple of years ago with a five-year plan and we've kind of been sticking with that. I think it's, might be here in my file cabinet.
He is on the team. So he is actively keeping us up to date on what that technology plan looks like. So, right now with moving on to Office 365, we have some policies that will be coming up in order to drive the conversation around how people will be using 365. And that's what this whole thing really is, is that we're countywide utilizing the same objectives and, and plans for the future. So we're all on the same page and driving in the same bus, if you will, toward a common county plan. So we've already, Annette's going to take the asset management plan and she's starting to compile some information on that. Gabe's going to help with a long-term capital improvement plan. That'll be a part of that as far as sustainability. Pat's taking all the leadership stuff. So we've got numerous people that are taking different pieces of the pie. And we will have more back to you guys.
Okay, sounds great. It's kind of one of those things that better be flexible because it's, things like COVID come along and it tips the whole boat sideways.
Actually, that's why we need it. Because when things like COVID come along, we have a plan in place and everybody drives from the same, you know, road on that. So everybody understands what their role is and what the next steps are. Because without a plan, I think it creates uncertainty. And that's not good in an environment like this where people are uncertain about what they're supposed to be doing, what their future looks like and how to just pay. So this will help us design all of that.
And I think, I think it'll help us be more efficient if we, I mean, even in our strategic planning, I may be free to talk, but even in our strategic planning meeting, we were talking about what happens in the fall, you know, October, November, when this whole thing blows up again. This gives us an opportunity to be more prepared for it than we were now. So, yeah, it's exciting to work on that.
We just said if you'd known that this was going to happen three months ago, what would you have done differently?
Yeah, exactly.
Driven some decisions from there. So.
Well, and it's neat because we've had kind of good practice this time.
Yeah.
Figure out where we're short. I'm just so glad we haven't gotten in the jail yet. Because that's could be really devastating.
They've done a really good job in the jail even being ahead of it. So Mike LaCroy is really staying on top of that. He's a planner and he likes to, he's got a strategic mindset. So he's looking strategically. You know how to make sure that they stay that way. So have a good leader over there.
Well, and what's really nice that I've learned about plans is that if you ever get into litigation, those plans are going to kick in big time.
Yes, they will.
Prove that you have tried to plan for this and that. It'll save you a lot of liability later on. So I applaud you for your work, Sherry. That's awesome.
I applaud Pat.
And Pat.
Yeah, Sherry.
This is the conversation started, but it's really important to have those boots on the ground working on it. So.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, let's go to approval of facilities and transfer station manager job description.
Y'all have the job description now, right? Sherry sent it to you?
Mr. Chairman, before Pat begins her presentation, I just want to make sure that the commissioners are fully aware that we're not relinquishing our responsibilities to act as liaisons. But what our concern is, is that we are acting as day-to-day supervisors of these offices. And it's becoming extremely difficult for myself and Gabe to make sure that projects are getting completed, that the day-to-day work is getting done, having the knowledge of all of the ins and outs on top of what we're already responsible for. We're the only elected officials that have these departments that don't have a supervisor reviewing the day-to-day operations. We would respectfully ask that the commissioners look at potentially creating solid waste, buildings and grounds manager to be funded if possible in October. We're not asking for this to be funded now. We're asking the commissioners to take a look at this and see if this is a direction that they would like to move in. Because it is becoming extremely difficult for the treasurer and myself to oversee day-to-day operations of these two offices. Thank you.
No, I appreciate that, Doug. I mean, it takes a lot for a guy to admit that I'm in underwater and need some help. And that's what we're all about here. Pat, when you sent this out, I got the one on the facility transfers. Your one for buildings and grounds. Are you going to combine those or how's that?
No, the building and ground, uh, did I share?
We were going to combine those two positions.
Building and grounds, all we have for the building and grounds are the tax.
Are the what?
Are the technicians, the facility technicians.
But I understand that this person's going to be, he went half-time billing or half-time solid waste?
Facility and transfer station manager job description combines them both. Is that what you're asking?
Facility is the grounds then?
Yes, facility, building and grounds is, I pulled this when, when Ralph was, when Ralph was here. And then we just kind of updated a little bit for what we need for now. Took out some things that we don't use anymore. But what I don't know is, for one, on this is department. Are we creating a new department? Is it going to be under facilities? And then to transfer, the transfer station is just part of facilities? And I mean, I don't know what you all were thinking about a department. I don't know what cost center it would go under.
We do that before, Doug. We paid with it, with, um.
I'll have to go back and find out how Ralph's position was paid. But I, I don't know if it was a combination of out of the buildings and grounds salary as well as solid waste. I'll have to take a look back. It was 2015 is when the last time Ralph was here.
Can I take a west, Doug? He was half buildings and grounds and half solid waste.
But I think we put it under a facilities department, didn't we? I mean, just for where the position itself would reside.
Again, I don't recall.
I don't either. I'll have to look.
We can take a look to find out where it was exactly funded from.
Yeah. Well, probably funded both.
Yes, it was a department head that the commissioners supervised, right?
Right.
But I don't know where the funding came out of.
I don't either. I can, I can look. I think it was out of, as far as department goes, not necessarily funding. But as far as the department where it resided, I think it was under facilities.
That would make sense. I mean, Ralph built a waste management facility.
Yeah, he did.
So, okay. And so Doug, I have a question for you. If, so we're only in May. If we wait until October, that means, you know, that's five months from now where you guys have to continue to do this work. So Gabe and May mentioned, and maybe Gabe can speak to this, that he's got some additional funding in his budget that could potentially go to some of this. So why would we wait if it's a need that's now?
Because it's not funded. It's not funded fully out of, the benefits aren't funded. The position isn't funded. It is not funded at this point in time. And I think the commissioners have always taken a stance that to create a position mid-year is not the wisest thing to do. You should be budgeting for these type of positions.
Because you're not getting the public input.
That's the issue is you've kind of changed the budget mid-stream and you haven't really told anybody. But I'm kind of thinking Sherry's might be onto something here because we've got so many little projects going on. This person could be in charge of recycling, they could, you know, but.
If the commissioners would be willing to maybe oversee some of these day-to-day operations, that would be extremely helpful for myself and Gabe. The conditional use permit, the, again, I'm not going to speak for the matters that Gabe's overseeing. I'm going to speak for the matters that I'm attempting to oversee. The north end of the building, I appreciate, Mr. Chairman, that you've kind of taken an active role to make sure that the day-to-day work is getting done. That's extremely helpful for myself. Pat's kind of making sure the facilities are getting cleaned. If we can have some assistance from the commissioners, just with the day-to-day supervisions of these, that would be a weight off my shoulders, my shoulders personally.
And I, you know, that's what I'm trying to do. But when we get into July, I'm going to be gone for July trying to make a living at home. So I don't want to dump this all back on you when I start making hay. So that's the thing that I'm thinking about.
And again, we can still continue the, the supervision of those. I just have concerns that it's, some of the projects might not be getting completed to the satisfaction of myself as well as the commissioners.
Well, and I'm looking at this as a person that could set up, you know, with contractors to come in and do the painting, clean the carpets and do that kind of work. And you don't have time and neither does Gabe. And I understand that.
What we're respectfully asking is the commissioners take a look to see if this position is in fact needed.
I think it's needed. And I, I think, you know, I could see it starting sooner or I could see us waiting until beginning of the new fiscal year to start it up. But I, I think it's definitely a needed position. I mean, there's a gap in there that I think there's quite a few things that could be done. And I think having the supervisor, manager, that would be also an integral part of like some of the project work is a huge thing for us.
The other issue, and I'm going to put it right out here on the table, is the fact that we paid both you guys a couple of grand more a year to be the liaisons.
We'll still act as the liaisons. Right now, we're acting as the supervisors, as the department heads of these two offices.
So actually, you're getting a bargain when you think of it that way because they are, you know, taking the role of somebody that should have been a director or they should have had more money to cover the supervisor part of it.
But what I'm getting at is if we end up hiring this person, we only need one person to be a liaison.
Yeah.
So some, one or the other is going to have to think about how we're going to do this.
So I think what I hear Doug saying, correct me if I'm wrong, Doug, but like Pat is an apartment head. And she still has a liaison or do you have a liaison?
Yeah, Carol.
So Carol is still her liaison to the board as an elected official. So what we're doing is we're hiring a Pat, but there's still required oversight.
It's going to do two different functions that we can combine into one position. Halftime or whatever time, buildings and ground, half-time solid waste. We only need one person to be that liaison.
So.
His liaison, her liaison.
But again, I think we're missing that one step in that we, right now Doug and Gabe are functioning as a Pat. They are actually doing the work.
Right.
So we're going to hire somebody to do the work. But what Doug and Gabe are saying is they are still the liaison to the board.
But Mr. Chairman's indicating is that, I don't know if there needs to be two liaisons for that position. Potentially that liaison role could go to Gabe because the department that I'm the liaison for is IT.
Got it.
And that was why it was set up at the beginning is the treasurer was the liaison for the transfer station.
Now, if there's an issue with, I don't want to give up that salary, then maybe what we can do is find another department out here like Carol has two or three and give one of those to Doug or Gabe, whoever. And to take that, to take some relief off them.
Well, again, I think that, that from a salary standpoint, these two positions were given a little extra money to do the liaison. But what happened in that case was they didn't end up being liaison. They were the supervisor. And so, yeah, and so now we've actually gotten a bargain because they've done that. So if you look at the numbers, you know, Doug already has IT. So maybe Gabe would like to be the liaison for that position. So and keep in mind liaison is just someone that on the day-to-day, we have somebody to bounce off of and to help us with policy. But you all are the ones that direct our work.
Well, and to help us if we have employee issues.
Uh huh.
To keep that wall between us and their discipline until they appear.
Exactly.
That's the main goal.
And I'm there to help always with those two. So, yes.
But I think those are things we need to kind of settle and talk about. And I, depending on, you know, if Doug has the time, maybe he could dig in and see if we have any funds to hire somebody now. I'm not sure we do, to be honest with you. It'd have to come out of general fund reserve or, and that's a, 13 is what, about $20 an hour?
I don't know. I have to look.
Don't leave. Oh, sure.
Yeah.
With, with the COVID, our, the solid waste budget is, is looking pretty good. I anticipate having a pretty decent sized surplus at this point. The volume of activity up there just dropped and so our expenditures dropped. I don't know how much that is, but it's probably fairly substantial. Potentially, potentially would cover, you know, the next few months of this, of the salary. We'd have, we'd have to study that out, but there will be a surplus in solid waste this fiscal year.
Can you give me a rough 100,000, 50,000?
Up to cover until October?
I'm not sure. I'd, I'd really prefer to look at it first, you know, kind of basically budget the next few months out and see, and see where we're at. 100,000 is probably not out of line. That's possible.
And Gabe, did we keep in, that includes all the expenses for recycling move and all that, that's in there still?
Correct. Yeah, we have $100,000 in, in the capital improvement fund. Within solid waste, we also have a contingent expense account. It's got 115, 110,000 dollars in it, I think. So there's probably some room to, to work with.
Okay, well, we might, we'll see what we can do and if Doug can look. Between the two of them, I think we could probably go out now for the position. But I want to make sure we're not going to get in the red before we hit the end of the year.
Understood.
And me, I, I'm ready to get the person on now and get her going and make life easier for all of us. So.
I think it would be really beneficial to get somebody especially in the, I mean, we're both. I mean, we got the recycling and the other part of that as far as the solid waste side goes. But I think really from the building standpoint, there's so much going on in the, in here right now that we really need somebody to be looking at the big picture on that. And I think those are things that are going to be happening in the next few months instead of waiting until October.
Yeah.
Well, building and, and grounds have provided, you know, a list of all of the projects that they have right now that are emergency projects. They're in red. So there's, you know, there's going to be a lot of work to be done this summer.
And that's the first time we've ever seen anything like that.
And thank you, Doug, for that because I think you requested that for them.
Yep. So Pat, if I figured right here, 13, we're coming in at about 55,000, 3, 39. And then we got to take.
And then the other.
What is the benefits? 20%? 30%?
30, probably.
Roughly 30% is kind of what the, the figure that we usually use.
Pat, will you give a minute? Oh, there we go. Never mind.
So keep in mind that even if, I mean, you all approved the job description and we decide to go ahead with this position, and let's say we wait until next week or the week after, it's still easily going to be a month before we'd even have somebody on board. So, you know, it could be a month and a half out. I mean, even, and that's moving quickly. That's getting the job posted, starting the interviews and getting the interviews done within, you know, two or three weeks after posting. That's when we interview. And if they're currently working, we'd have to give two weeks' notice. Or if they're not in the area and they have to find a place to live, that's a whole nother story.
Would we be able to advertise that prior to the fiscal year?
Oh, yeah.
So we could advertise and start looking now and then bring them on, worst case scenario, in October.
If we wanted October to be the target date, probably would start, uh, start the recruiting process in August. You don't want to start too soon or you'll lose people. So if they, you know, if that were the process, then it'd be August before we'd start recruiting.
I figured right, Pat, we'd need about $6,000 a month to get us to the end of the year.
Yeah. So if you think about that, it'd probably be the first of July before they would be able to start. So now we're talking July, August.
$25,000?
Yeah, July, August, September. That's three months.
I say go for it, but.
Well, that's for all you all to make that decision. And actually, the action item isn't that. The action item is on the job description. So, so that would be another action item.
Let's go back to that.
Sherry and I worked on this together. So.
They also have that they ban a bill of the Valley County office supplies so that there's some kind of a central repository for ordering.
So Doug, how do you guys do office supplies? Is that?
Each office is usually responsible for, or has been purchasing their own supplies. We've always discussed about having a centralized location, getting one type of pens, one type of paper clips. How it is now though is each department budgets a supply budget and they expand up to their budget that they have budgeted for. It's always been thought that it would be a wise idea to have a centralized procurement policy for, for supplies. There, there are needs that each department has individually, but for pens, paper, paper clips, staplers, it always made sense to have someone that was making those purchases.
Ralph was supposed to be doing that. At least he was working on it when I left.
Who was?
Ralph McKenzie.
Oh, Ralph.
Yeah.
Usually saves a lot more money. I mean, look what David did when he combined all of the copier.
Well, copier paper, you were self-combinating now. We don't buy our own now. But it's things like.
So this would actually help that issue. It'd be one person does it all and they just check inventory every week and.
But David did all the contracts, didn't he? And put them all together instead of everybody having individual contracts and saved a bunch of money.
Yeah.
So there's ways to do that that will be cost-effective and help pay for that position.
Well, Pat, you got the one in there we need and that's one that performs other duties as a sign.
I think we need a hands-on person. I really do. You know, they're going to build that wall downstairs that needs to be built.
And that was my thinking is actually do construction, actually pound nails and, you know, not just hire folks to do it, but actually do the little projects.
Well, so.
I can't think of anything else to add. It looks like you guys did a great job.
Except that I'm hearing something that maybe we need to add in there. Just to make sure that they understand that they may have to work. And I've got to figure out how to say it.
Say like it reads, it's very minimal basic knowledge of carpentry and construction methods.
Knowledge of building codes. Oh, that's missing.
Performs light duty construction projects or something like that.
Yeah. Of construction.
Are you guys good with it? Everybody good with it?
The one thing I also would like to add as I'm listening to you all, as far as the minimum requirements, is experience in project management. As he's going to be managing projects, correct?
Well, you've got four or more years of experience managing facilities.
But that's not the same as managing projects. Actually, I received an application from somebody today that might fit this.
We've got to have somebody that's strong enough to do, you know, build stuff.
Yeah, and they have to be able to manage the projects.
I think that's a great ad.
Yeah. And understanding of construction methods and that performs light duty construction.
So let me ask you this question, then. If he works on a public facility, does he have to have a public license?
Like a construction license? I have no idea.
He's an employee of the county?
He's an employee of the county.
You can't just come in and do electrical. You have to be a certified.
Oh, that one, I would say that you'd have to be an electrical. Yeah.
So maybe that's one of the requirements is that they have a public works license? I don't know. I'm just throwing this out.
Public works is different.
I think that's a specialized, I mean, those are the contracts. I think you got to hire somebody.
Yeah, I think he just has to know when he needs to manage and when, you know, when he needs to bring an electrical contractor in. And, and from a safety standpoint, I would say that nobody touches the electrical aspect of it unless they are certified.
Are a licensed electrician?
Right. Because I would hate for somebody to get electrocuted because they thought they knew what they were doing.
But you don't have to be licensed to pound nails or build a wall or paint or anything like that. Probably you'd have to be licensed.
I've managed them for years.
Now, what you're thinking of is by statute, when you hire somebody for certain types of projects, they have to be certified contractors, depending on the value of the different projects. But if it was that serious or difficult type of project, we would be hiring somebody who's responsible, who met those criteria. So this person, like you said, is just supervising that. So I don't think you need somebody that meets that particular criteria. You know, it's, it's just by statute when you're, when you're letting a contract.
A big contract.
For the county, it's a public works type contract, then they have to be certified as a public works contractor.
Contractor, right.
Well, and I will tell you, if we put that stricter parameters on it, no one will apply. Because you can make a lot more money as a certified electrician than probably what we're willing to pay.
Yeah.
I wonder if we don't put on here too that they facilitate the capital improvement plan or something like that, that participate with the capital improvement plan or somehow.
About participate and facilitate?
Because they probably won't be facilitating, but they will be.
Participate in, yeah, participate in the capital improvement plan.
Well, you got it, Doug. It performs all work duties and activities in accordance with county policies.
Yeah.
Procedures and safety practices.
Yeah, and that could, you know, it's, the, creating the plan is a short-term, a short-term thing. It's following the plan that becomes the long-term part of it. So, but that would, I think that's probably encompassed in here.
That's to make sure it doesn't get dropped after it gets established. Good job.
I think it looks great. I'll make a motion then that we accept the job description for facilities and maintenance supervisor.
Transfer station.
Transfer. Let me read the top. Facilities and transfer station manager.
One second.
So then, then I think we should kind of wait here from Gabe and Doug. If we can afford to do it here right away. And I, we'll look at all of this, look at the numbers. I think we should proceed personally. But I want to make sure enough, this is money that would go to a raise next year. So that you got to keep that in mind. I don't know. What do you think, you guys? Throw in here. Should we wait or should we get them going now? I'm looking for input.
You've got to let them look for the financial side of it first before they give it to you.
There's so much to do.
Yes.
I think in the end, this will be about a $72,000 position. That's a big chunk of change.
We also have a lot of assets that right now we're spending funds on. So we can keep up with some of that. And it actually saves us money in the long run.
Okay.
No, I didn't see what we needed.
Well, I thought we did.
Yeah.
No, they did.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There we did. Okay, the next item up on the agenda is discussion decision on allowing the public to testify at public hearings in person. My feeling, like we talked about last week, Cindy, was that it'd be the appellant and the applicant. This water waste that's coming up could be huge. If we open up to the public. I don't know. What do you want to do?
Well, May 14th is the P and Z and that one's not controversial. But the P and Z commission will be here and will be taking testimony over the telephone. Next Monday is the short-term rental RV and ADUs. You've had one public hearing. Monday is the short-term rental RV and ADUs. Um, you've had one public hearing. This is your second round. I think just like you did today over the telephone. Um, and the waterways, there is no applicant, there's no appellant, there's nobody that actually has to come do a presentation. Um, and I don't know why we couldn't just do over the telephone for that one also. You know, they call in with their three minutes and that would allow us to keep people distant and stuff, because if there's a lot of people, it would just, it would be difficult to trail them through here.
So Doug, are you willing to do the phone thing again for that waterways?
Yeah, absolutely. But I think they need to contact myself or Cindy or someone directly to make sure that, uh, we get a list of who they are, um, and provide them with the phone number.
That really helped to have a list today.
So you want to start messaging that they can call you or I?
I, I, um, well, depends. I, it's a planning and zoning matter. I guess it probably makes sense for them to contact you. Waterways matters, probably makes sense to contact myself.
Short-term rental RV and ADU is.
Is that the boards? I, I would defer to you.
So me.
Okay.
I can do those. Um, and then the other one is the petition for the rehearing on June eighth. It's just going to be your reconsideration.
Yeah, it's just us, isn't it?
Yeah, they, they can be on the phone unless we totally open everything up. And then I expect the June eleventh P and Z that we're just going to have a normal meeting. If there's too many people there that they can't space, then we'll ask them to stand outside until their items comes up. And we'll just kind of track them in the back door here.
So I had talked to Mary about bringing people in through the back doors here and Cindy and I discussed it. Mary's not excited about that because she said right now, security is a main issue for everyone. So bringing them through the magnetometer is something that she would really rather prefer we do.
So is she going to be here at night then?
I don't know the answer to that. I mean, what is happening right now?
We just opened the door up.
And there's no security?
That's the way we did before the COVID-19.
You need to ask the sheriff on that. I thought that they were going to be here for P and Z meetings as well.
They have not been.
So, yeah, I think that there was, I thought we were under the impression that we're going to be here also. P and Z can get hotter than our meetings can.
They just, Jeremy unlocks the door at five, people come in that door, and then when we leave, we call dispatch and tell them.
We probably need to clarify that.
I honestly feel like they need to come through the magnetometer like everybody else, or we're just defeating our whole security purpose.
So June eleventh, we'll just tell everybody to come down there and someone will provide security. We'll reach out to Patty. Oh, reach out to Patty.
I thought that issue was all solved, but I guess not.
Well, it was getting solved about the time that COVID-19 came along.
Well, I remember talking about P and Z because like Sherry said, they're more disgruntled sometimes than these things that we need a security.
It's not securing a building. If it's open up and anybody can walk through, that is.
Not secure.
That causes a huge cause.
Yeah, I think we should run everybody through security no matter what meeting it is, what we're doing. Otherwise, we're just losing control of it and we just wasted money.
One of the conversations that we had about moving it to the EOC.
I think that's where it died. I think that's where that conversation died.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I just feel like P and Z should be just as protected as we are. I mean, I've been to some pretty hot P and Z meetings before, so.
So we'll talk, I'll talk or Sherry, whoever, we can talk to sheriff, make sure there's somebody here for that P and Z for security.
So for right now, we're just going to conduct our hearings like we've been doing over the phone.
Until June eleventh.
The same.
I'm going to agree now on that.
Um, June eleventh, I think the mass is fifty people in a meeting for the basis, so just keep that in.
And then, um.
When is it coming to pull it off?
When it comes pulling off, I think it's June eighth third.
That's that, hold on.
None of that's so big to change.
But definitely.
Well, we can start. We start getting coronavirus up here. A lot of things are going to change really fast again, so.
It actually ends June twelfth.
June twelfth?
Mm-hmm. So after June twenty-sixth, you can have more than fifty. So June, oh wait, June thirteenth, you can have more than fifty. That's when all that regulations.
Even thirteenth?
So technically, you need to see what kind of participation you're going to have and maybe have people check in to see how many you're going to have. And if it's a huge hearing, then it may have to be on the phone.
Well, we're going to tell people, we're going to go ahead and, um, let people testify over the phone during that meeting, even though we never have historically in case they're not comfortable coming here.
I think that's a good call.
And I think we're going to have to do that probably through the summer in all of our meetings, give that an option because people aren't going to want to come in.
I think into the future. I think we're going to be dealing with this for a while, so.
P and Z will just space them out in this area.
Okay, so that's all that? We got that one? We need a, this is an action item. Do we need a motion for that?
I don't know. Was this my agenda either?
Uh, I believe one of the commissioners asked to put it on. I can't remember which one.
It was probably me I was asking.
I don't think it's the only thing we need to vote on. It's just.
It, it might make it more clear to the general public though if the commissioners do take a, a vote on it, but I'll defer to the commissioners.
And the other thing we need to clarify is if we can change the button on the front page of the website, because right now it says you can view commissioner meetings and the other one says P and Z procedures. And it'd be nice if it said either P and Z and board or just public hearing procedures, if we could change those. So tell me again where you're looking. Watch commissioner meetings or P and Z public hearing procedures?
Right. It'd be nice if your guys' instructions can be included. So either take P and Z off.
Oh, just put public hearing procedures.
Procedures procedures and that can link up to the instructions. And at each one of these meetings, we'll do the specific directions like I did for the one today.
Cindy, are you, uh, live streaming your P and Z meetings as well?
We're going to need to.
Okay.
So later this week, I'll have Lori get with you so you can show, I mean, we have a meeting Thursday.
Good.
And you can show her how to do the phone.
Absolutely.
Please.
That's the hardest part, just dialing the thing in. He sits there for twenty minutes punching numbers.
The other question I have, so on the homepage, I'm looking at this, and Doug, the only thing that is on here is Valley County appointment options, scheduled DMV appointment. So do you want David to change that so it's not just DMV?
Well, I mean, all departments are responsible for their own webpage. I don't know who is actually is responsible for the main page.
We, we can't change the, the ribbon or that main area. Cameron has to do that.
I think we have, yeah. Uh.
I thought McKenzie did those kinds of changes.
IT and McKenzie have the ability to change the main page. All other departments have the ability to change their own individual pages, so it's probably an IT ticket that we need to put in.
Which, yeah, we did, but so we'll take care of that.
So we probably, just whatever you guys want to do, but DMV is the only one that can schedule an appointment online right now. So if other departments want to be able to schedule online, I need to get that changed.
Yeah, you could just, uh, take out DMV and all departments will need an appointment.
I think some departments had some concerns with allowing the general public to set up the appointments. I think it was preferred that if those individuals could contact that office directly, um, to make sure that those appointments are being set correctly. So I, I think that what we probably should do is discuss with the offices, the departments to determine if they are going to allow the general public to set their appointments or if we're going to be requiring those individuals to contact us directly to set those appointments up.
Eric, with David, each individual department, do your own thing, but.
Yeah, I don't really, I'll just schedule with individual, mine, I've got mine taken care of.
I think DMV is the only one that is allowing individuals to set up appointments. And I don't know if that, when it says DMV, if that's vehicle registration or driver's license.
On here, it just says new vehicle registration, title and registration. That's the only thing they're addressing.
Yep. So if I'm an old guy, don't know, doesn't know how to use a computer, I'm just going to call June, I need to see one of your appraisers. So he'll call your office, you'll set it up and then when front desk calls, he's here, you'll go get him, do your thing and then take him right back out or out the east side. I think that's a good way to do it. Same thing with Pat, if you have interviews or whatever, but you're doing all that online, so. But if we can get, uh, David or McKenzie to change it, I think it would help a little bit, explain it a little more. Okay, so do we still need a motion then, Doug?
That, that's your guys' call. I think we.
Anybody remember what we did to make the motion?
I move that we begin accepting public testimony in person beginning June eleventh and only electronic communication for public hearings prior to that date, but that we also keep the electronic, um, communication available for those that don't choose to come in person.
Second that.
Okay, now this is just for public hearings. I want to make sure we're still going to hopefully open up by the twenty-fifth. Is that correct?
Correct.
People coming in the buildings.
This is for.
This is just for public hearings. Okay. Motion is second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, the last one on the list, I think. We're going to go into an executive session. I need a motion, please.
I'll make a motion. We're going to do executive session per ad hoc code seven four dash two oh six four one F.
Second.
Uh, by roll call, please.
Ding and aye.
Not the aye.
As for guy.